No complaints or accusations regarding personnel to be allowed during this public discussion time. Time limit of three minutes will be given, but more than one person is represented for a group. Only one spokesperson will be heard. For an opportunity for additional comments on non-agenda items towards the end of the meeting. I do have an agenda tonight. The agenda is regarding to personnel that is added to the agenda. As we prepare for school, we some of those hired are slated to go home. So that's the agenda this week.
I mean, a motion for the approval of the that's why Dr. Smith, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor, motion passes.
Approval of minutes, minutes for school board meeting and executive session held on Tuesday, 25th.
Any other questions? I mean, a motion for approval list. First one is Mrs. Martin. Second one is Mr. Stanley, all those in favor, motion passes.
Approval vouchers. Countable federal checks, three six two two oh, the three six three four nine vouchers. So five oh two two two, five oh two six four, and payroll on the third of July, including plus over four million, one hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars, and twelve cents.
Any questions? I need a motion for approval of that. Second one is Mr. Stanley, second by Dr. Smith, all those in favor, motion passes.
Approval personnel, personnel are outside of the agenda or in your file, ready for approval.
Any questions? Any motion for approval of this? From any of you who said?
Sure.
We do have two here. It's okay. Okay. I'll start with Chloe. She is going to be our school aide for the coming year. She has worked in our vice president's room since the last few years. And they were begging me to find her position. Because she has really, she's been a shining light for these kids. And she asked me, and also said that they are shining light for her. And we're walking ass in the market, she's like, aids, and that excited her. You know, she's super nervous. But it's okay. And then, this is Lindsay. And she's gonna hate me, but she has to tell you very loudly where she is from, because this is unbelievable. Uh, our girl, what was?
Oh, wow. That is, that is very impressive.
Yeah, impressive. We were actually doing our interview, Mr. Ethipert and Mrs. Myers. And I were doing it in the conference room in my high school. And all the way across the table, you're going to say it, because I won't say it right. But there's a picture of a castle, and she says, uh, and her castle. And we're like, okay. And then we get up and go look at it afterwards, and there's a plaque on there, that that is the castle of Argyle.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, wow. Crazy. She will be the education professional with Sarah Heil, um, for our example. I, I text Sarah and told her I thought they had great family issues with Scotland, and her first name was, does she have an accent? But we're excited. And we also have a, um, Chloe. Um, Chelsea Parker, who's been in student group.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We also have a teacher that we're honoring as head student, Dave Hallworth.
Uh, Hayward. Hayward, sorry. There's no Y, so it gets confusing. It's okay.
Here comes us from Newcastle. And when I started here, it was inspection day. And so we're glad to have you back. What do you think? How many people say?
I'm glad to be back. It's been nine years. I was talking, we ran into Mr. Van earlier today, realized it would be nine years. Yeah.
So as I was coming in, well, I mean, the first couple of months, we were together.
Yeah.
He was on his way out. A couple of months together back in two thousand sixteen. Here we are back in two thousand.
That's right.
It's good to have you back. Thank you.
The introductions are, are now, that's in your booth.
I need a motion for approval of personnel, please. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mr. Wyver, all those in favor, motion passes.
Next, we have approval donation, you can see there, I, fifty dollar donation, you can check, insert, it's for us here.
A motion for approval of donations. First by Mrs. Martin, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor, motion passes.
We do have some fundraisers, and I, Mr. Brown. Brother was, this is Myers, and originally this request, but Mr. Brown's taking over for that goal. So World Science Chocolate fundraiser, which they do every year, some of the big fundraisers, uh, outside of the, outside of the month fundraiser. So it's a big fundraiser. The other one is Mr. Ernieak, George Turner, I asked, he has a youth football camp. Youth football camp actually started just a bit. But, uh, because they didn't know where we're gonna be with the construction out there, they didn't know if we would sweep it or not. So, uh, they had that last minute, so I ask for approval on most of those fundraisers.
Uh, a motion for approval of under, please. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Dr. Smith, all those in favor, motion passes.
Action items, the first action item, approval of school bus route adjustments, twenty-five, twenty-six. Do you want those to be on the video? Uh, Chris, uh, Chris Juritz, our transportation director, is, is saying for two bus route adjustments. Uh, we found that, and she was standing out there with, with, on the school days, with two bus duty, that some of our buses are less old than used. So she's, uh, she did something, perhaps a little bit, just around schedule, moved one bus from the, from the fleet as far as route. But she's not, she's not affect time at all. So I ask for your approval this time.
Any questions? Is there any more shots? I need a motion for approval of bus route adjustments, please. First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Mr. Wyver, all those in favor.
Next is approval of transfer of funds to ECA, screw that. As Mr. Foley just directs ECA on cleanup, moving from one ECA count to another, but it's efficient, so.
Any other questions for the presenters? Not any motion for approval of transfer of funds, please. First by Mr. Stanley, second by Mrs. Martin, all those in favor, motion passes.
Next is, uh, this Ben's groups, Chris Dick are requesting permission to clear, or clear bus number twenty-eight. As surplus, due date is twenty-twelve bus. As high mileage, repair costs are rising on that bus. For their past journey, sir, for plus that, just how much? Ask for your approval.
I need a motion for approval of that. First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Mr. Wyver, all those in favor, motion passes.
Next is permission to hire. This is a request that we have after that last board meeting in July, every, every year, yes, permission to hire. Before the next board meeting, as schools come through that next board meeting. So as for permission to let them hire, and accordingly, what we'll do then, this next board meeting, we also request you for approval, keep the goal in the context of hiring.
Motion for approval of permission to hire. First by Mrs. Martin, second by Mr. Stanley, all those in favor, motion passes.
The next item we have, very important, is that they're not seeking approval of our four-nine financial report, that file will call our, actually, on late total now. Uh, but again, just a reminder, that's just each of our funds, the beginning balance as of January one, revenue expenditures for the six-month period, and then beginning fund balance as of two thirty. Uh, so seeking your purpose, or your approval last night, uh, so I find like, split that as well.
I need a motion for approval of that. First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Dr. Smith, all those in favor, motion passes.
And now we got the agenda, personnel issue, those are also, check that agenda, I ask for approval this time.
Any questions? I need a motion for the approval of personnel, please. First by Mr. Wyver, second by Mrs. Martin, all those in favor, motion passes.
Okay, we will jump straight into June cash flow. All right. Thank you. Oh, there it is. Ooh, it's up there.
Do you want it smaller?
It didn't real well, is it?
I had Jamie make it bigger, but if you want it smaller, we can.
It's gonna be tough to follow up. They're having to change the order on their, on their devices. Um, might be easier that way. Give everybody just a minute here. Maybe that person, but, oh, okay. Uh, go up to the top and try to change that to hundred fifty percent, let's see what that does. Uh, it's up to the top middle.
Okay.
Uh, over, yeah, oop. Right there, click that. Click again. Uh, you know what, click it one more time.
All right.
Yeah.
There you go.
Work off that one. Uh, can we just scroll a little bit so we get the, the, yeah. No other direction, sorry. Okay, there we go. All right, so in the education fund for the month of June, we started with a fund balance of three million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars, forty-one cents. Uh, we did receive one million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars, seventy cents of revenue. And we spent one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars, and seventy-five cents. Which then, at the end of the month, left us with a fund balance of three million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars, and thirty-six cents. Um, we do hit, uh, we do hit payouts in the month of June. So I will tell you that our, our first July payroll, uh, was, was significantly less. Twenty-two payout rate, contracts in June, that people, uh, resigned and take other positions. So, up a little bit there, but we should see that, we should see those, those wages towering come back down in March of July. I will begin, July was the first month that we received our new tuition support based on safety for year twenty-six. So as I build July cash flow, I will, I will get back to revenue side and tuition support, firm up those numbers a little bit, uh, to give us a little bit more of a true picture, we close out the six months here, but try to close this gap in, in revenue and expenditures. In our debt service, um, this, this debt service fund is normally pretty boring, but for the month of June, and there are more actions in it. So, uh, we did receive, uh, property tax revenue in the month of June. So we did, uh, we started the month with six hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars, eighty cents as our fund balance debt service. Uh, but we did receive one million, six hundred three thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars, fifty-seven cents in revenue. Uh, we paid our lease payments of one million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars, thirty-seven cents. So at the end of the month, that left us with a fund balance of nine hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred thirty dollars. In a perfect world, we, we would receive fifty percent of our revenue in June and another fifty percent in December, but that's typically not how it works. So December revenue will be down, we will not end with that fund balance. It, it will be less than, than what we're perming. Uh, on the operations side, significant increase in revenue for the month of June as well because of property tax revenue. Um, but we started the month with a fund balance of one million, three hundred thousand, two hundred five dollars. Um, we put in the bank, two million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred nine dollars, thirty-seven cents. And we spent two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred four dollars, thirty-two cents. Leaving us with a fund balance of three million, three hundred five thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, and five cents. Our rainy day fund, uh, saw no activity, so we started at the end of the month, one million, seven hundred forty-six dollars, and thirty-six cents. I will take any questions as it pertains to cash flow this time. What's that?
Okay, well, does it exist?
No, it, it does. It, it does. But, so it makes every day interesting. Okay. You can, you can back my question through this. Um, construction update. So I heard a little, little conversation around this. Uh, I spoke with E and B today. We should have concrete in front of the home features by end of day Friday. So they're gonna work on getting that concrete pad forward in front of the home features, uh, that will extend from the concrete portion that we did back in eighteen, and that main entry, all the way to the north, connecting to the new concrete, which is part of, uh, that project. So we, we should see concrete there. Um, he did tell me, you know, they dug that parking lot out, and now we've had rain and all that water flowing there. Um, there have been a couple of little hiccups. One, um, our line that runs from the lift station, just on the east side of the football building, underneath the parking lots, the northeast, connects to the sewer line coming out of this building, to the wastewater. There's an old cast iron pipe. And we found two spots in that cast iron slot, in that cast iron pipe that was split from underside. So we are in the process of having that line repeated, replaced as well. So it's gonna increase that project by about eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, but that's gonna run the old football building all the way across. Uh, could we just replace what we know is broken? Yes. But if we're gonna put all new asphalt out there, and in six months from now, have another issue. So while we have it torn up, we're just gonna buy a bowl, and we're just gonna get it all done. And it will be taken care of. Uh, because then our most recent project is a new lift station out by, by the new building, with a new line in front of here. So at that point, we'll have two new lines, should have, uh, I don't remember. But that's, that's the plan there. Uh, that's all working in coordination with the paving. Um, E and B reported to me today that it's four days of so work at paving. They want that back porch turned. So when they can get on it, it's four days. Obviously, we're a little bit late now, uh, to replace that line, it's gonna be roughly four days. Uh, but right now, uh, they are still shooting out there prior to our football scrimmage, which is always good. So, um, still plenty of group of students parking at this time. Um, they'll be able to, for a minute, out there. Um, but we are, we're, we're still trying to cross that, that project right now. We know, when we start today, we start to think of, so. Junior gym restroom, so these restrooms here that have been under, um, renovation for a few months now. Uh, some of the tile, the boys restroom, had to be, that there was some baby factory balls and tile that they put up. So, uh, there, there's tiles that, that are renewed right now, waiting on new shipments coming in, it's pretty tall, tiles, but those are getting closer to me, but, uh. Long-term facility study, uh, Lancer Architects will be here July thirty-first at nine AM. They will be on site from about nine AM to five PM on the thirty-first, as they ensure for each of our facilities. Um, and we start that process of having that all, so we say, we can start the thirty-first, get first, sign the season, get foreground here. Um, and as we start that process. And then, just so you guys know, last week, I believe, I went down to Indianapolis, did a policy analytics presentation on the impact of Senate Act One. Um, but what they are going to do is they're gonna be present at our August end board meeting. And they will present to you on what Senate Act, what's impacted on the Madison Square, I hope. So we will get specific data. Did I have a date wrong, David? Oh, okay. Yeah, so, so they will be here to present on, you know, just like the meeting I sat in last week, it's pretty broad. And, you know, because the impacts all of us are different. Uh, and on that night, they will be here to present, so we can listen to what is exactly for us. Um, so, uh, you can, you can part of that as well. But so, a lot of different things, uh, up there right now, a lot of movement, but that's what I have. The striping on the parking lot, there's not a guarantee, the striping will be completed prior to scrimmage against Clint Central. But the striping, right now, I am knowing, what I am being informed of, the striping will absolutely be done before our family fun night, first home, or soon football game, or spring.
I made the first teacher days, on the fourth of fifth. We are approaching that, although this, we haven't passed, passed, we have had, uh, those days on Thursday, Friday. Started the student day, and there were a lot of our teachers that didn't like that, but we did throw in the whole week with students. And so this year, that's what shifted to the fourth of fifth, which is like, her, she's sort of, on the Tuesday. So this year, on the fourth, we're going to have lunch, serve lunch to the staff. And then we'll have our, our district live feed right after lunch. And then they'll stay in the heat, and go on for the, go back to school on, on that first time. And, and that's the reason we've done it like that, because nobody had the appetite on Tuesday to stay late and then come back in the next morning. So within that, that same, so, so that's what's gonna happen on, the fourth of fifth. Uh, that school night will be on the fourth, I believe that runs four thirty to six thirty, so, on the up down. Uh, but that's not the, that is the, that is the. First due date, obviously, is August sixth. Uh, it's the major orientation, this is Friday, uh, fourth of fifth. So the project, Mr. Ben is already into the summer project, but I don't think I can add any more to that. But if anybody had, uh, over the last six weeks, has driven by the old central office, down the early rise center, and you freeze it up, and it's just, they don't work very well, it's just, look what it's doing. Very nice job on that. Uh, the last thing is the ISBA conference, September fifteenth, sixteenth. I would like for you all to tell me if you are interested in going this year. Uh, we will obviously be able to send you, like, a, so, tell me if you're interested in going to that. We can get you, get you a call. It seems like it is about a week earlier than it had to be. Yes. So you could get, you could get, and that information, if you want to, if you think that would be fantastic. Just access for, for whatever, for, inside of mission of that. Questions about, like, the other side? I'm glad it is. Next, public expressions. Public is always invited to speak before the board. They stand recognized by the president, and stage first, last, and common should be addressed to the board, and be leveled at the corporation issue only. Uh, no complaints or accusations regarding personnel to be allowed during this public discussion time. Time limit of three minutes will be given, for one person representing for a group, only one spokesperson will be heard.
Is there somewhere I can stand? Right there, it's good. Okay, great, thanks. My name's Jamie Pitt. Um, I have prepared a statement for the board. Good evening, members of the Madison Grant School Board. My name is Jamie Pitt, and I'm speaking tonight as a passionate advocate for literacy and for the freedom to read. I'm also an Aungomla, a community member, and someone who deeply values the role that books play, shaking thoughtful, empathetic, and informed young people. I want to express my disappointment in the recent decision to remove another book from the school library. Beyond the concern I feel about censorship, I feel a deep lack of transparency on the decision was made without input from educators, librarians, or students. It feels like an opportunity for discussion, for collaboration, was missed. I understand the point made by one of your board members, that is, is the public's responsibility to stand for. I agree that civic awareness and engagement are essential. But I would also argue that transparency is what makes public responsibility possible. The public can only fulfill its role when it has access to clear information, inclusive processes, and a seat at the table. Fairness means more than a right to react, it means a chance to be heard before a decision is made. As most of you know, at this table, the reading scores for this school district are not satisfactory. It makes me sad, and that should concern all of us at this table. Now more than ever, we need to foster a joy of reading, not create a fear of it. Removing books sends a troubling message that exploring ideas through books is harmful rather than enriching. To help encourage that joy, I personally purchased five young adult books, which I'm donating to the Madison Grant Library. I hope students will have the opportunity to discover them on their own terms. These books aren't just about reading, words on a page, they're about feeling seen, exploring perspectives, and learning how to think critically. In a recent article by Catherine Marsh, Marsh, she notes that many kids today don't fall in love with reading because they see it as a job or a chore, which totally makes sense, right? Because they're preparing for I R E, they're taking tests, they're writing papers. They're not reading to discover, to learn, for fun. So reading is a chore, and then we wonder why kids don't want to do it in their free time, right? Outside of school. That's why tonight I want to recommend two thoughtful steps forward. I, and the research that I have read, twenty minutes a day, improves grades, it improves cognition, it improves quality of life, twenty minutes a day. And so I would encourage the school district to be intentional, to encourage the love of reading, to connect students with librarians and books that they love. The second step is, when a book is challenged, to form a committee, I know that we formed a committee. But maybe that committee could encompass parents and even students. Um, this not only brings transparency and fairness to the process, but it shows students that we will lead in critical thinking and respectful dialogue. We need to give students books that make them laugh, cry, and think, books that challenge them, comfort them, books that help them understand others and themselves. Please, uh, please let's not close in our curiosity, let's keep it open, and let's be champions for literacy and not barriers to it. I appreciate your time and for listening. So, I don't know who this should go to, but hopefully someone can get this to the library. Thank you very much.
I'm just like, what, Mr. Richard, this crew, they're doing fantastic stuff, buildings, the fourth block, for Fairmount's, I would, they're awesome. This is student workers. I stopped in one, thank the student worker, like, I, I thought it was awesome. They're, they're dragging about this time, so, these driven pretty hard.
Like we just said the other day, most, most years, they're, like, you know, we perceive these right, they just haven't stopped though.
Welcome to Jits, August fifth, seven o'clock, right here in the boardroom, August first, noon, seven, seven o'clock. Then we'll be here also.
Is there a, a motion for you, please? First by Mr. Stanley. Second by Mrs. Martin, all those in favor, any?